Meeting of the Harrison County Board of Education for December 20th, 2022. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and since Mr. Hope's standing next to the slide, he can wait.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. A nation of honor and in this world with a duty to the citizens.
It might be the best of things. All right, we have some special recognitions and presentations tonight. And first up is really one of our better meetings every year where we welcome Dr. Kelly Nelson.
Almost doesn't belong to me. Pretty sad you didn't get the job. So 22 years ago, a kind of skinny brown haired kid showed up and handed out a check and said, "We'd be back." And 22 years later, this not so skinny, not so brown haired guy is back. And once again, I'm the face of, I'm the voice of the charity, but really the heart of the charity and what we do is really this community. You know, 2022 has been a pretty terrible year in a lot, a lot of ways for a lot, a lot of people. The economy is really tough and things are tough out there. For this charity, thanks to this community, it's really been a banner year for us. We finally found our, our ultimate project. We're the new naming sponsor for the soon to be built inclusive playground out by the bridge in Bridgeport. So we're pretty jacked about that. We're back to support two of our favorite things, the school nurses discretionary fund and children's apparel fund. And this year we had some extra money and found a program that's down here that's in need, something called Families in Transition. And as I understand it, Families in Transition try to get people off the streets and get the first month and last month of rent paid. So we took that on this year to fund it. And it's our vow to either come back and refund that again next year, or at least find a new owner for it. So between the $150,000 we did for the inclusive playground and the $50,000 we have tonight, it takes what we've given back to this community because of this community, over $2 million back from this charity to this community. So we're blessed to be able to do it and we'll be back.
If you want to let, I want to let everyone know where that money goes into that we've received.
Sure. Every donation that he sends in, we have a children's apparel program. We call it CAPS. If you're in the school system, that's what it is. And any child in need that need extra clothing, shoes, or whatever, we have that fund available and schools can reach out. Mr. Kirby is overseeing that and taking care of it for us. And it's just, can't say enough about that program. I used it as a school administrator, I'm sure you all did. The, I want to say the Families in Transition program that you've so graciously helped us with this year. We work with Title and United Way also to help fund this. We had three families just this week that reached out. That need is growing exponentially, really more than, than, than we had anticipated. So you helped three families this week. So we appreciate that for the Families in Transition.
It's, it's not a me, it's a we.
Yeah, well.
This community doing it.
Right. So that's the way the school system is. If it wasn't for everybody here and support from you and our community resources and families, we wouldn't be able to do what we do. So can't say enough, the school nurses fund, the discretionary nurses fund purchases glasses, I mean, you name it, if they need it. And it's medical and of course, Jody Sperry kind of oversees that and works with the schools. So can't really say enough. So we sure appreciate you as a partner.
Thank you. We'll be back.
All right, that moves us down to item B, which is our double A state cheerleading champions, Lincoln High School.
The coaches, yeah, at least our coaches. Your coach, would you come up? Oh, here we go. Mandy Brown and Assistant Coach of Candy Toothman. And of course, the school principals back here, we have Mr. Decker. Nothing happens in a vacuum. You need support from everybody here. And just like I was saying with children's charity, there's nothing we do in our schools that, that works well without families and support and the work and time that you guys put in. There's probably a lot of volunteer time, a lot of travel and a lot of extra effort for that. So we can't say thank you enough for that. And if you'd like to tell a little bit, isn't this the first time in a while that you've been state champ?
Yeah. It's been 13 years.
Since baseball.
Since baseball.
Yeah.
Was a state champ. And then cheer since 2007, I do believe.
So I know I got a big excited thing from Mr. Decker the night before. Got some nice pictures. It was great to see and thank you from Harrison County for putting in the time and for working with these young ladies and young men to create such a great program.
Thank you. Always nice when we can bring it home, right?
It is, absolutely. So a lot of hard work though goes into that when I win. So if Mr. Tucker's going to hand out some certificates.
Okay.
Mr. Decker, there's one there for Mr. Decker.
Okay.
And as you notice, he's wearing a Coopers shirt, but it does say baseball. But that's okay. And it's black. What do you think? Can you get him a gold shirt?
We can work on that.
Want to go ahead and start with, do you want to read their names or you'll be there?
No, we want to do that.
Why don't you all come? If you just read down their names and then you give them their certificates.
Yes, that way. That way.
That way. They're going to get a picture. Now, so what are you doing? If I read your name, you could just put your hand up so we can say, put a name with the face, okay?
And then you get, hey, somebody's got to have to get down to the front, like normal to the front. Normal picture, normal picture. Drop it all the way down to span.
Yep.
So we have, oh, you want to do the picture right now?
They're, they're already got it. Let's grab the picture and then we can.
Get in here. All right, let's recognize this team. We have Carrie Nero. And we have Isaiah Holloway. Emily Brown. Katie Swagger. 11th grade, Morgan Aldaker. Tyders. Olivia Hayes. Trinity Eldridge. You guys should say junior, that's more official. Sorry about that. Juniors. And then we have sophomores, Summer Moore. Lynn Dorsey. Is that Sarah? Sarah Kilmeck. She's also a sophomore. Bailey Dragu, sophomore. Dragu. Dragu. I don't like that. Okay, just tell me, you know. Riley Lee, also sophomore. Jaylen Sayer, sophomore. Krista. Ah, very hot. Okay, she's a sophomore. Cheyenne Thomas, sophomore. Once again, I just want to say thank you to Mandy Brown and to Candy Toothman and also David Decker, thank you for coming in. Mr. Decker.
Thanks for having me.
I love your shirts.
Thank you. I love all the gifts.
All part of. Well, you make them. Wow, she makes these shirts. You guys, that's a huge accomplishment. Thank you from Harrison County. Thank you from our board.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, that brings us down to item C of our special recognitions presentation. We have a presentation on career and technical education from Dr. Geraldine Beckett, who is our latest addition to the CTE program.
We also have Shelley McKee here, she's working in that department. And then Mrs. Knight.
Thank you.
That's why you came, right? This is part of this.
And giving you some notes after, you've got a lot of changes in the CTE department. All right, so the, I'll give one to you. So I started in this position September 30th. And it was about a couple of weeks later that I learned that Heidi was going to be leaving. We have been busy making sure that things are not falling through the cracks, making sure that our teachers are getting what they need, making sure that WDDE gets what they need from Harrison County, as well as a lot of other things. So the very first page, I just put that there because when we had our countywide CTE advisory committee meeting back in November, this was something I shared with them. And at the top, you'll see it's CTE statistics. And the first words on that slide, participants, concentrators, and completers. So normally, and in the past, we only gave data to WDDE on completers. Those were students who had completed four classes in one program, in the same program. Now they're wanting data on concentrators, which is a student who's completed at least two classes in a CTE program where four are required. So this is, this is a change in what they have been doing. Participants are those that have taken at least one class in a CTE program. So when we look at the, the first hyperlink there in the left column, that's a hyperlink that you can go to, to see the CTE enrollment for each county in West Virginia and also the numbers of participants, concentrators, and finally completers that they have in each county. If you have a device, you can go to the WDD homepage and follow the path below. From the homepage, you would go to Technical and Adult Education, then Career Tech West Virginia, which by the way, is the new brand for CTE in West Virginia. That's what they're calling it, Career Tech West Virginia. And then you would go to the page, Facts About CTE. When I went to this page, I wanted to look at different counties. So over in the right column, we have percentages for the number of completers, students that have completed all four courses in a CTE program. And I want to know what you guys noticed about the trends in that data. If you look at the names of the counties, Tucker, 23% of their students in Tucker County High School are CTE completers. Calhoun, 25%. Berkeley, three. Marion, seven. Harrison, 11. Mon, six. Canalwa, eight. Anybody?
Smaller counties have bigger percentages.
Yes, the more rural, the less populated, the more rural the county is, the higher the percentage of completers. And when we look at the difference between Harrison and Mon counties, we always, you know, Harrison kind of in the shadow of Mon, seemingly smaller, less able, less progressive. But if you really look, Harrison, in this case, has 11% of our students are CTE completers in the high schools. And we have a larger airport and more flights than the airport in Morgantown. We also have a higher population than Morgantown without counting the students. So those facts are often overlooked. But when you look at the counties that have a more urban population, you'll see that of course, less of those students become completers. So there's a lot of information at that hyperlink, if you're ever interested in looking at it, it's kind of revealing and interesting. And at the very bottom, just taking one additional class, one, one CTE course, just taking one CTE course, students more likely graduate from high school, more likely to be employed after high school, more likely to be enrolled into your college, and better compensated in the year after high school. So we can see that even a student being just a participant in the CTE program, though, what the positive effects of that can be for that student. So on the next page, there's my job title at the top. And about 50% of the funding for this position comes from CTE funding. And it's for professional development and teacher coaching. So the things that we're doing with professional development, Heidi shared the budget with me. I planned professional development sessions for the first and second semester. That would ultimately use up the budget, if every teacher attended, of course, for the funding for professional development. So I have made school visits and I've met with all the new and newer CTE teachers that Heidi had indicated to me who were newer and newer. And one of the things I'm finding is that because of the teacher shortage, that in, in some areas, the teachers don't only need support with CTE information, they need support with curriculum, they need help with finding appropriate materials, they need help with the teaching part of their job. So this position is, is a great fit for that as well and supports that need as well. On November 17th, we had a PD session in teams for new and older CTE teachers. We talked about reporting requirements for completers, how they can track their students from one year to the next to make sure that their students are signing up for the right classes that they need to be completers for the next year, how they can support their simulated workplaces, and the Career Tech Ed student organizations like FFA and FBLA. So those were the kind of things what we talked about with them. January the 10th, we're having a career work skills training, is a new CTE program this year, four of our high schools have it. I'm going to have a, a session with them with the Canalwa County Coordinator, CWST. She's going to work with our teachers on being able to make it so that employers in our area are contacted by four different high schools. So we're going to try to coordinate some of those hours. But that is coming up on January 10th. And then on around the 24th, we still have to nail that down with the, all of the CTE teachers on new data reporting requirements. NOCT, which is an organization that supports CTE and actually employers as well, industries as well. The Classroom to Career Portal at NOCT is going to enable our students and our teachers to be able to record information. If a student spends five hours on a community service project, there's a place in this portal for them to record that. They record the hours that they spend, not just on community service projects, but time spent in their simulated workplace, internships that they may have, they can record the time there as well. There are different buckets that are appropriate for the different types of activities that they're involved in. But at, at that professional development, there will be training on that NOCT Classroom to Career Portal. And then in second semester, we'll continue the PD for the CTE teachers. And I want to have a program of study, professional development session, meaning that all the business teachers get together for a session, all the ag teachers get together, all the RTC, all the human services. So in these sessions, they're going to be able to talk about any concerns they have, they can share ideas. We have our textbook adoption coming up in the spring. It's now called instructional materials adoption instead of just textbook adoption. It's going to be a huge endeavor. It happens every seven years. I remember when Cindy Vazini was a CTE director in Harrison County, I was at Liberty High School. I remember Cindy, I did the adoption from my classroom. And I remember Mrs. Knight saying, "Why are you doing the adoption?" And she was trying to, you know, help, but it was a big undertaking. So it'll be done again, and I'm sure I'll be heavily involved in the process. The things, I know that things have changed, the types of materials our teachers are using have changed. So it has been a while since we did one, but I know this time, there may be certain programs of study that won't order a book, or maybe not even an ebook. There are so many other ways that they can meet the CSOs and so many resources that are all, some of them already created for them specifically for what they teach. So that'll be a different thing. That's instructional materials adoption in the spring. So I am emailing our teachers with updates, getting them information about when information, data has to be reported to this office, so we can report that data to WDDE. I'm helping them with simulated workplace issues, purchasing procedures, learning about codes that are 80 miles long, of trying to help them make sure that they, I even created a purchasing procedure, one, two, three, four, five, for the teachers and one for a CTE director, because their, their process is different and the teachers don't need to know all of the things that go on, but they need something that would help them, especially the new ones, to have it in a list. So those are the kind of things I've been trying to help them with, questions about subcodes, travel costs, anything you can imagine. So the next large area, CTE advisory committee meetings. There is a countywide CTE advisory council. It's attended by employers in the area and representatives from higher education. They are required to meet twice a year and we met November 30th at RCB. And Mr. Gerito and I coordinated the meeting after Heidi had left. And the committee members met and toured Robert Seabird's Bird's Eye View. It's the Student News Channel. They toured that stage. And then Michelle Allen has led us to lunch at simulated workplace at RCB and her students, her hospitality students, served them lunch, served the committee lunch. So it was a good meeting and it lasted three hours. It was, it ended with a couple of members just sitting there talking about ways they could improve opportunities for students in Harrison County. So these meetings, albeit long, very, very helpful to have these employers in the same room with Pierpont Community Technical College reps. There was a lot of conversation going on, a lot of good information was exchanged. And I don't know if you guys know Tracy Miller, but she's the president of one of the big four aerospace companies. And she is a huge advocate for Harrison County schools. And Heidi had given me her information. She is on our countywide CTE advisory committee. She also sits on the HCAT Program Advisory Committee in Bridgeport, at Bridgeport High School. She's also helping with the Perkins Collaborative Reserve Grant, which was last year, may have been the first year for, from the file folder that I have. It is basically a grant that provides opportunities for, it was, it was applied for middle school students to be able to go to RCDI and do STEM projects and learn about STEM and tour the aerospace companies. And I am more and more hearing from parents and students who are going into it. Gabe Howe from RCB is going into, I heard from a student yesterday that I saw out that said that they were going to start that training program. And I'm hearing more and more, and so these things that are happening are going to work and are starting to work, especially when you hear a kid that you didn't think would do something like that now knows that it's a possibility for them to. So the, the countywide CTE advisory committee and then every program of study in your CTE departments is supposed to have also their own advisory committee. The ag teachers are supposed to have an advisory committee twice a year. Some of the schools have employers in the area that they've worked with, that they have a good relationship with. So they have their own advisory committee meetings. Some of them do not. So I have been asked to make sure that they, that they have these meetings with employers. And what it ends up being is not just do the employers come in and give them feedback on the equipment they're using, the technology that might be new, the processes that might be new that they let our teachers know about, but also these employers become resources for our schools. They become resources for field trips or speakers. For curriculum, BBNT Bank Now Truist offers Everfy.com for free. And they have a food truck project. They have entrepreneurship lessons on there and a lot of good things that the kids really like, really hands-on type of projects. And if you are needing help with a special project, for example, employers are there. But they do have, there's more that happens at those meetings than just a one-way interaction from the employers, looking at what the teacher are teaching and then telling them, you know, "We don't do that much anymore." They also tell teachers what type of tests they give their employees, especially for the business programs, the ones, the students that are learning Microsoft Office, Adobe Software. It was really great to hear that Manpower, who was one of the people that I invited to that meeting for the business teachers, it was great to hear they still give a keyboarding test, because our students, guess what? They still learn keyboarding in Microsoft Office in that, in that class, VCA, Business Computer Applications. Part of it is keyboarding. It's a bell ringer, but they do, by the end of the year, the kids speed, it does go up, their accuracy goes up. So hearing that Manpower still gives those kind of tests and the FBI, 40 words a minute. So these kinds of things that the students, the skills that they're learning do make them marketable. And when you hear employers tell you what your students are going to face when they go to, when they go there, it helps them to be prepared. So this relationship is, will improve our students' ability to be marketable and to be ready for the type of skills that they're wanting. Manpower, I added them because they not only hire for office occupations, they hire all kinds of jobs. So the people from Manpower have a unique perspective and they can add to the discussion a lot. So they definitely will be coming back. I do hope that we can, you know, continue to grow these program study meetings so that not just business, but all of our different programs and the studies have a CTE advisory committee that meets twice a year like they are supposed to. And like I said, a lot of the teachers have a personal relationship. I did. I even have a personal relationship with the Clarksville, the Cape, Clarksville Area Postal Employees Credit Union and CWV, another credit union. They came and did a, an activity called Mad City Money with my students for years. And I ended up putting two students at that bank for internship 15 years ago. So when you get these relationships created, it does cause things to happen. So the more that we can get these employers in the same room with these teachers, the more that we'll have, things will be productive and help meet all of our goals. So now, the internship and job shadowing opportunities, the one listed there at the top, Clarksville Waterboard Internship with Ag. The one listed there at the top, Clarksburg Waterboard Internship with Ag Students from Liberty. So this actually started before COVID. There had been a meeting and Mrs. Knight was on that meeting. And when I was hired, I was given, Mrs. Stutler gave me, Jason Myers is the partial water board manager, gave me his card and said, you need to call him. So I reached out to him and to Mrs. Knight, because I read in the file that there had been this meeting. So to reaffirm both of their commitments, reached out to both of them. We had a meeting and a Mrs. Knight is going to come up and tell you about that, because it's, it's a great opportunity for our students and I want her to be able to share.
If I can interject real quick, that was four years ago, I think I brought, I'm a former board member of the Clarksburg Waterboard, so it was near and dear to my heart. So I brought that four years ago and was wanting this. So I'm glad, I went to the Christmas luncheon last week there and they're all abuzz about, I mean, they won. There are four, you know, West Virginia Rural Water Association, I think 400 some members of that. So out of those 400 members, even if you're a public service district that doesn't make your own water, you have to employ a water operator. And the average age now is in the 50s for water operators. So there's a big need for water operators and they're very good paying jobs. So I mean, this is an excellent opportunity for them. It's one of the, you know, Clarksburg Waterboard is one of the largest water utilities in the state of West Virginia. The fact that they're begging to come into our schools, you know, that was four years ago I brought that. So I'm glad to see that it's, it's come to fruition.
Yes, I'm glad too. I mean, it's a pilot, the first pilot.
Thank you. Oh, excuse me. This was really exciting for me because I thought maybe that had just gone away. And when Dr. Beckett called and said, hey, we're interested in this and the water board's interested in this again, are you interested? Yes, I am. Mr. Cox, Al Cox, who is now a member of the Waterboard, he came to that meeting. He specifically wanted Liberty High School to be the pilot program. They do not have a pilot program for pre-apprenticeship in the state of West Virginia. So this would be the pilot program that they would potentially model after. We had an excellent meeting and it lasted over two hours. And there was so much that we got worked out during that brief period of time. Like to just give you a few details about it. The pilot program to start out would only have one to two students. They don't want to make this too big until they see exactly how much goes into this, how much room and space they have. So we're going to start small. And then the pilot program will last anywhere from two to three years, probably looking at three years, so that we have a couple of cycles of students go through and then they will have a good idea of what they're working with. It was extremely interesting to note that everybody had to have at least a level one operator in their area. That Clarksburg Waterboard just hired three, but they took them from Buchanan. So now Buchanan's looking for them. There is not enough people out there trained in this area to fill these positions. And these are good, well-paying positions that these men that are 50 years old now have made a living at. And as they said, a very nice living. So I was happy to see that they wanted to begin to implement that in our community so that in the future, some of these students that we put through this program will become people who will work at our water facilities, whether it's the water treatment plant, whether it's the wastewater treatment or some other area that goes into that. The pre-apprenticeship program is accredited through the Department of Labor and it is funded by the USDA through the West Virginia Rural Water Association. Our goal is to give students with a background in agriculture education marketable job skills and increase the number of qualified applicants that the Waterboard will have for positions, not just locally, but throughout the state in water treatment facilities. The students selected for the program would spend half the school day as operators in training at the Clarksburg Waterboard. They would begin that their junior year. Now for the first year, which would be next year, we would put one senior in and they would actually complete as much of the program as they could in one year. So during their senior year, the student would be able to earn SAE credit for their career technical program. And during their junior year, they would receive high school credit. They would go out much as they do down to UTC, so they would be working, you know, out in the, in the field. The training for this program, which before, when we talked four years ago, the training was going to be done by our people. And we were all a little hesitant on that, because we didn't know anything about water treatment plants. And my teachers at that time were a little bit nervous about them trying to teach content of something they knew nothing about, and then the students going there to implement those skills. Well, now the West Virginia Rural Water Association is taking over all of that training. So they have their own manual, they have their own coursework, it's all been approved. So they do all of the training. We just supply them with the students and monitor, monitor their growth and their progress. Robert Davis, who works at the Clarksburg Waterboard, he would supervise that training and the coursework and the job skills that the students have mastered, keep records of those. So they would have a documentation record or documentation keeping list of things that they would be looking for as the students went through this. The materials are provided by the West Virginia Rural Water Association. During this two pro, two-year program, they are enrolled as pre-apprentices. So the Labor Department, their policies require you to be, be employed by the water utility before you can be an apprentice. So what the students would be doing is they would be earning hours to enroll into that apprenticeship program. At the end of their senior year, after two years in this program, they would earn about 750 hours during each year to get into that apprenticeship program through that. I believe it's about 2,000 hours they have to accumulate. So we talked also that after their junior year in that summer, the Waterboard felt that they could employ the students, even if it's for just a three or four week period, a paid employment for them for their summer, which is another incentive to bring them back as a senior to complete that pre-apprenticeship program. They also talked about during that pre-apprenticeship as a senior, the students could get work-based experience where they could also pay them their senior year. So that is another incentive. A lot of kids want to go out and they want to go to work. And here's an opportunity for them as a senior to go out, go to work, earn money and earn the skill at the same time. And still maintain the hours that they would need, get the, accumulate the hours that they would need to get toward that apprenticeship. The development of the program, how are we going to start? That was another thing that we talked about. Like I said, we did so much at that one meeting that it was just amazing. I walked out of there and felt like everything was already taken care of. We'd like to start them in the fall of '23, '24. And we want to start one junior and one senior. The following year, that junior would continue into the program as a senior and would serve as a mentor to the new incoming junior for that year. To begin our first year, how we would do this, and I've already talked to Mr. Tennant, who is my lead ag teacher, and he and Miss Sekman have looked over some of their students. Ask them to give me a list of students that you think would have the skills and the ability and be responsible and able to do this. Give me a list of about 15 students. So they are looking at that. What we're going to do is take them on a tour, maybe a two-hour tour of the Waterboard, just this is where you would be working, this is what the facility's like. Following that tour, Dr. Beckett and I are going to put together an application that the students would have to complete in order to try to get into that program. Once they've completed the application, we'll take those applicants and we will take them over to the Waterboard for a full day. And at that time, Waterboard members said, you know, at the treatment plant, they're going to give them some hands-on experience that day. So following that, we would have an interview with school members and Clarksburg Waterboard people from the treatment plant. Because as they told us, they're going to be able to have an idea of which students are going to be really able to do this by the end of that first day, when they give them some hands-on things. And I was really excited by that, because a lot of times kids go into something that they think is going to be a glamorous profession, only to find out that, oh my gosh, I don't want to do this at all. So I want them to have a taste of what they're going to do. I want them to see, this is what this job involves. This is what I'm going to learn. And for them to be so willing to do all of that coursework training, that's the other exciting part. Because they know what's going to be required. They know what these students will need to know in order to be successful in the apprenticeship program. So that's where, that's what they want to push them. They said, we said, well, how much math do they need to have? They said, basic math. We'll teach them the math that they need to know for our system. And so, you know, we've got our kids, we've got them going up through algebra two. And like they talked at that meeting, sometimes kids wonder, why do I need to know algebra? Where am I ever going to use this? And he said, we show them that it doesn't, we don't talk about it being algebra. This is what you need to do in order to get this together, in order to do this at the, at the treatment plant. So they're going to work on all of those types of skills and get them ready. So I'm really excited about that. And there's only one thing that is left for us to do, because I think we have it pretty well laid out. And that's for Dr. Beckett and I to sit down and develop a memorandum, memorandum of understanding. And then what I'm doing here tonight, I'd really like to ask your approval to go ahead and move forward with this project. I think it's one that will help us to not only help our students, but also to help our community. And we have so many students who, once they graduate college or graduate high school, they go off to the oil fields or they go here or there. We're not keeping enough people in our state. And I think this is one way that we can do this. And after this two or three years, there are several public service districts around that we, we could then expand this possibly out. Waterboard may expand it to another school or maybe two other schools, depending upon what they find as to be the limit that they feel that they can have at one time with students. So with your blessing, I'm excited about this pilot project. And I think that this is something that is going to serve not just the students, but the community, not just now, not tomorrow, but for years to come. Thank you.
And with that, I don't know that we have to have an actionable item, but I would ask that it be placed on the next agenda in MOU. And the reason is, I'd actually like to have the Waterboard here when we do that as well. You know, at that next meeting, have Jason or someone from the Waterboard, because not, I can't speak for the rest of the board, but I'm not only 100% in favor, but I hope this is the start of 100 more of these coming from other industry. But I know from the water standpoint, these are not, you know, low-paying jobs. These are high-paying jobs. And so it's a good place to start and I'm a fan of CTE, so keep it rolling.
So, so if I could interject two things, can you mention so that the paper and media can understand what the starting, what a starting salary? I mean, you brought that up a couple of times.
He did not mention what the starting salary was.
Okay. I think it would be good for some of these students to find that out.
I don't know what the starting salary, but I can say that, and, and the newspaper can certainly check with Mr. Myers over there, but generally a water operator is in the $60,000 range.
I think that's important.
They're, they're very, they're difficult to come by. And when you have a job that, that is required, then you can name a better salary. When, when they have to, you know, Clarksburg Waterboard has more than one operator. They can't function without an operator, at least one operator. They have several operators in the public service districts. You may have a small public service district and they don't even make their own water, but they have to have a water operator. Well, you can imagine, so you've got one that's maybe covering 10 different ones. You know, so he's, he's, you know, I know folks at the Clarksburg Waterboard have had to go down and take additional jobs at other public service districts. So they're making their salary plus, you know, the salary from there. So these are very good paying services.
And the other thing too, Mr. Nirvana, that level one, that's just the entry level. They have four levels that you can get to. And the other thing that they did tell us was that, you know, for someone going, once they start into that and they get to be that level one operator, if they want to go take some college classes and they pass that college class, they would reimburse them for the cost of their tuition. So they would allow them to continue to gain skills in, you know, in a, in a lot of areas that may be affiliated with that water treatment. So the more, the higher up they go in those levels to get to that level four, the higher the salary is, but the more time they have to invest in it too, with what we call continuing education.
So the, the other thing that I wanted to bring up, Dr. Beckett, is we have a, a, a great relationship with the Harrison County Chamber of Commerce. Superintendent Stutler sits on the board. And one of the things that I think we could use, and I've, and I've said this for years, is use the chamber as a conduit for other businesses to do the same thing that you're doing with, with this particular scenario. Find the skills that these businesses in Harrison County Chamber need for workers.
I've been waiting for two months to be invited to a meeting, the Harrison County Chamber of Commerce.
I will get you at the next meeting.
I've emailed Kathy Wagner three times. In fact, when we had our College and Career Fair, it's funny that you brought this up, but we had our College and Career Fair, I wanted my email with the registration flyer to go out to the employers and had not been. So I sent it to her and asked her to do that. Nothing happened. And then Tracy Miller, the lady I was telling you about, she sent it too. And several economic, Harrison County Economic Development Council people as well. And two weeks went by and it still hadn't went out. So then, and you know what, I'm putting myself on the chopping block by telling you this right here, but I'm just going to tell you. That's the way it's happened. And Tracy said, Jerry, get back with me a few days before, get back with me November 1st. The event was November 10th. Tracy said, get back with me November 1st, Jerry, let me know how many employers you have. So I got back with her. It hadn't went out yet. They hadn't pushed it out. So I got back with Tracy. I said, we have eight. Eight. She said, I said, yes. And, and so she pushed it out again and she, and her subject line was, this is pathetic. And so she put it out and, and then it still was two or three more days. But I did get an email from Ms. Wagner saying that she did send it out. So the last three or four days before the event, we have, it's calling, phones are ringing, emails going. And so the night of the event, we had some people staying there that didn't have a table, because we didn't even know they were coming, because they just decided to show up. And we were able to get them what they needed and they had a really, really great event. There ended up being about 30, about 60 altogether, 60 employers and educational reps. So there were at least 30 employers there. So it was great. And one thing I want to mention about that is when I interviewed for this job, Mr. Lopez had asked me how, what can you do to improve apprenticeships with our labor unions in the area? What can be done with that? And so when we had the career and college fair, I thought about that. And so I got ahold of a friend that is in the IBEW Hall over at Northview. And he gave me the email, this is how this job works, this liaison position that you guys have hired me do. This is how it works. So I got ahold of the lady that Shane gave me the number for and explained to her what my position was, what I was doing and what I needed. And she said, send me the registration and the email. So I sent it to her, she sent it out. We had four internationals show up. We had electricians, pipe fitters, carpenters, and one other one was there. I went around, introduced myself to those gentlemen, gave them my card, they gave me their card. And then I talked to them to see if they'd be interested in speaking to our students over at UTC in those programs. And I've talked with Matt Call ahead of time to cover, you know, to make sure he would be open to them approaching their instructors. And Matt said that there were a couple different locals that did come in on a regular basis, but he said he would welcome that. And he told me, anything you need, let me know. So I'm going to be checking back after the first of the year with those reps that I spoke with that night. I let them all know they were perfectly welcome to come in, please come in. I were talking, you know, maybe field trip speakers, and eventually setting up those apprenticeships that Mr. Lopez had talked about. So that's how a lot of this.
Certainly back to the chamber. We had an educational forum, and the meeting was all about, they, they want to reach out and out to the schools to get internships. So that's coming up in January.
That is something that we talked about a number of years ago.
Yeah. They're kind of revitalizing that, yeah.
Shadowing, or, 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 you know, internships.
Mr. Nirvana, do they meet every month?
Yes. Yeah, we're not quarterly, sorry.
Yeah.
Quarterly, they meet quarterly.
Okay, I have, I didn't know.
I, I will speak with them.
Superintendent Stoller's on.
Yeah. They're just revitalizing.
I knew we were members, because I got on the website and found out that Harrison County Schools is a member. Even mentioned in my email, you know, we're members. I'd like to come and represent my, so.
That will take you.
We'll get you there. I appreciate it. Because I'm supposed to attend community meetings, and I have been, but that is one that I particularly would like to attend.
All, all the businesses are there. They compromise.
Well, thank you very much. Thanks, Mrs.
Welcome. Um, we have a couple more things to outline.
Okay.
So on that page down below Clarksburg Waterboard, the Youth Apprenticeship Project, there's some things going on at United High School, particularly for special ed students. They have the Youth Apprenticeship Project funded by Department of Labor for local car dealerships in the area who need service employees, looking at Dan to have a Toyota possibly for a partnership there. Ashley Satterfield and I are working with Stefania Meadows from the Department of Rehab Services. They have the work program at United High School for special ed students. And the students are in the classroom for two days a week. Then they go out to the job site. It could be the Lou Bird, Harrison County Schools Warehouse, Sam's, Harry Green, Alboy Peckermy, Price Cutter, Eastern Pet Supply, for two days a week. Those are some examples of where they go. Then on Fridays, they have guest speakers, field trips, things of that nature. Students at United also do weekly shopping, packing of food bags for the food challenge students there. And then students in the work program do the Phoenix Philip, a snack cart that they sell snacks and beverages from. And Water Smith Park, there's going to be an opportunity there for our special ed students at United to partner with Water Smith Park for, and one week paid internship in the spring for 40 hours. So, and the next one, I'm excited about, the middle school opportunity. We're talking about CTE in high school. Well, now, the discussion has been from past few years, CTE at the middle school level as well. So Stonewall Jackson Memorial Hospital in Lewis County worked with the seventh and eighth grade students from Lewis County for a three-day academy during a school break, like spring break, Thanksgiving break. The students went to the hospital, and this was pre-COVID that it happened. But they did it a one or two years. And the students get exposed, they could choose what departments they want to shadow in. They get CPR certified, they learn basic first aid. They do, they sit down at one point with them after they've had a chance to see a lot, and they say, what interested you? And then when they hear the kid, they're at the table, the kids are just talking freely. And then they tell them what they need to do to be able to get that job, type of education they need to be able to get that job. So they also come away with scrubs, memories, their end stethoscope. They actually get to witness a surgery. They practice taking blood through a simulator. They give EKGs, they do vital signs, and they also look at different parts of the hospital. Sometimes not just the medical part, but all hospitals have kitchens, they have offices, they have maintenance, they have some basic offices as well and departments, like other businesses. So that is something that is going to come up. Heidi and I went to visit Amanda Landis from this hospital and asked her if she would work with our students in Harrison County at South Harrison Middle School, since it's so close. And she said they would. So she's going to get back with me after the first of the year, and we're going to be working with South Harrison Middle. I waited till Ms. Skidmore got settled in just a bit, and then approached her. She gave us our approval, her approval for this. So we will be meeting with them after the first of the year to start what we need to do to get that ready for our eighth graders, South Harrison Middle School. And new initiative, CTE Awards Assembly, CTE Inventory Share. So the Awards Assembly at RCB, and some of the principals heard me when I met them at principals' meeting about this. At RCB, a couple years ago, they wanted to make the Awards Assembly shorter. So they changed the CTE completers that normally would get corded. I would cord them, the CTEs cord them, give them a certificate up on stage in front of their family and friends. So that wasn't going to happen. They were only going to be stand and recognized, stand to be recognized. And that was not good enough for Michelle and I. So we knew that Steve would support us, and he did. And so we created the CTE Awards Assembly. And it went really well. We have a script that I'm, I really am hoping, now, if the school has, has it, has it in their regular program, and they'll have a problem with it, and everything's fine, then that's great. But if, if it would be needed, I can have a full script that I can share with them, that they could use, the, the parent invitation to invite the parents to come in, I can share that with them. So I'm hoping, and this is one of the things Mr. Rodrigo had talked about with me when I was first hired, that we're trying to get these things, not just in one school, but in all the schools if needed. And then the CTE Inventory Share. In an effort to conserve resources, we wanted to see what equipment may not be being used in all the centers, in all the schools, in the CTE departments. So, and, and this is something that is, that I have not started working on yet. I'm trying to, we're trying to cover until they hire someone in Heidi's position, but this is something where what we would do is, we would send out a copy. Every school has a copy, the CTE teachers have a copy of their inventory, the equipment they have, that's over $100, I think, something like that. And we would have them identify things they don't use. Anything you have that you don't use, that you think someone else might be able to use, highlight it, circle it, whatever, give it back to me, and then I'll collate a list and create a list of the things that aren't being used, that you might want to share, or you might want to give to someone else to use. And the things they're not using, we would then transfer it if another teacher wanted it. Nobody would know where it came from, they would just know it's available. And then we could share those resources. Sometimes when you push technology on people, they may not use it. Now, usually if a teacher wants to use something, they will reach out and ask for it, and, and they will use it. Once in a while, though, something that maybe won't get used, but is useful, or could be useful. So we're going to have the inventory share and try to, to look at different resources we may have. There is, let's see. And that's about it, actually. The very last couple pages that I gave you guys, I wanted you to see all the work that goes into, and I know you all have been on many meetings and read many, many minutes from many meetings, but this is the one that Mrs. Knight was talking about a little bit ago. These are the minutes that, of course, they didn't look like this when we first had minutes. I had four pages of single-spaced ramblings, and it took several hours to put it all together. But if you look at the very last page of what I gave you, under the Next Steps section, Mr. Hammer, you had asked about maybe coming back together with the board. And we, we will probably be ready to do that. If you look at under Next Steps, number one, Mrs. Knight and I will work together to create a draft of the application and the memo of understanding. And then we're going to have, they want, the Clarksburg Waterboard wants to meet with us again after we create the drafts.
Yeah, whenever you're ready to bring it to us.
Thank you.
But no.
We will definitely do that.
If we're going to do it, they may as well be invited.
Oh, absolutely. Love to have them here. And they want to be involved on any interviews that, that we have with the kids. They want to be there for the field trips to answer questions. So after we formulate a rough draft, and then we meet with them near the end of January, we plan to meet with them again, get their feedback on the application, the students will fill out annual memo of understanding, and then we'll create the final drafts for both of those documents. And then Mrs. Knight will present the memo of understanding to the superintendent and the board for approval and signature. And we, of course, will invite the Waterboard and West Virginia Rural Water Association representatives as well. And then a tour date for students will be set, and groups will be kept around 15 students, and everybody had positive things to say. So that's what I wanted to bring to you tonight, to let you know what's going on. Any questions?
How many students did you say actually is going to be involved in the program, Mrs. Knight?
One did, well, two each year. So that's all the Waterboard wanted to start with. They want to start small and then increase back as the pilot goes on, and they see how much more, how many more students they could actually take on. So that this first year, we will get two students. One will start as a junior, the other one will start during their senior year.
And they said if we run out of space at one facility, there's other facilities the students could be placed at.
I was thinking Sun Valley for you also there, you know, sometime.
Yeah, and that's, that's what he said. There were just numerous places around that, you know, if one facility got too full, they could send them to another facility. So I think they're looking at expanding, but they want to make sure that this pilot is going to work and the way we go about it, because I think that's what ultimately they want, whatever we do, to be the pilot for the state.
Thank you.
I think. And you can tell someone said CTE because Rafe showed up. You have anything to add?
No, not yet. I'm coming, though.
All right, with that moves us down to delegations. Do we have any delegations? No delegations, superintendents update.
Sure, I just have a few things. If you'll look in your packet, I did include the goals, the copied goals. I don't, if it's not on there for action, this is the copy for you to look at. So I did supply that to you. And then I also went up to you, you know, we completed the school culture surveys. Those results only are shared with the school. So we have to collect those back from the school and collate the results to give to you. So we're working on that right now. We're getting the schools to send those back. It's interesting, the state only gives those results back to the school principal and the school staff. It's interesting when you do a county-wide survey, but, so we're working on that. The other thing I want to say, since Rafe is here, and I'll do it during curriculum, he represented Harrison County at our last superintendent's meeting in Charleston. He had a group down there from his classes at Bridgeport High, and you got rave reviews. I actually spoke with the superintendent, and he appreciated it. We also had a student there from Bridgeport High that did a poetry reading. She is a poet, I don't think she's a poet laureate, but she's a poet, West Virginia poet.
Poetry Out Loud.
Yeah, Poetry Out Loud. She was wonderful. So we were well represented in Charleston, and so thank you to Rafe for that. I know you're here for the other piece, but we, we could kind of commented that whole superintendent's meeting, so.
That was, that, that was a great little thing for those, for those students to do, and a chance for us to help other counties.
Showcase what they're doing.
Showcase what the benefits are.
We had a representation, kind of each, what each had a student speak about each course that they're taking and what they're learning.
It was a true journey, took a picture.
Yes. That was kind of a mess, wasn't it? So nobody would cooperate, the superintendents, we were just everywhere. He was trying to get us all around, for sure. And then Jody, Kim, and.
Yeah.
The, the meeting was at five, and they were here to talk about, to represent the nurse's discretionary fund. So we're glad you're here.
We've already deposited.
We've already deposited checks. So you, you've got just a couple minutes to tell us how you use that money, Jody, because it's a good thing.
It is a good thing. I don't.
Just a couple minutes, yeah.
But we, we actually found we have more money than we thought we had. So we have used it various ways, anything from new mattresses, to medications, to glasses, to dental work. I'm just getting ready to pay a bill for bedbugs. So, you know, whatever the health need of the family is, we, we try to meet that need, and we do that with that fund. And actually, I'm texting Dr. Delson, and I'm like, well, guess what? I showed up at six o'clock for a five o'clock meeting. Oops. You know, I, I really missed you, and, and we really, really, really appreciate what he does for us. And he actually just texted me back that they're working on an endowment status for the school nurse fund, so that we'll never not have it, which is amazing. Because when we get together at state meetings, we're the only county that has this. Like, and people are blown away, the nurses are. Because if you get a kid with glasses that needs glasses, or needs dental work, or they just moved here from wherever, and they don't have a medical card yet, this fund allows us to meet the need that day, that minute, we can just go pay for something. And not try to find funds, and not try to find a program. Or, I mean, yes, we try to get them signed up with a medical card, but that doesn't help them that minute. And that's what they need, is help right that minute. So as he always tells me, keep spending the money and spend more money. But he, it's a great blessing, great, great blessing for us, and to have him do this with, for us, for I don't know how many years, point plus years now. So it's wonderful. But we're sorry we missed him, and we're sorry we missed the show at five.
But anyway, we, thank you. We're glad you're here now.
Thank you.
The only other thing I have is Jimmy has a quick facility something, Mr..
We did our bid today, and I'll go ahead and hand it to you, so that you can see the contracts that came in. So you can see that the low bid, I was not familiar, and neither were, neither was any of our facility guys with ADI. They were the low bid. However, in speaking to folks at McKinley, they're, they're out of Ohio, and they're a good company, will check their credentials, check through the state, and, but they did get the low bid. We would, if everything checks out, on the third, the agenda for the meeting of the third, put it on there to accept and be able to give them a notice to proceed. And again, this is preliminary, so I don't really want to put out a whole lot of numbers. It did come in about $100,000 lower than what the estimated cost would be, which is a positive. I walked McKinley today explicitly about no change orders, keep those prices where they are, and be able to continue to move on with Joey Smiley, to be able to move on with those other projects. So I just wanted to give you an update on that. Sure, can you?
Okay, so, yeah, I follow this, but I do want to.
Is that what your final answer is, alternate one and two?
Yeah, alternate one and two. So that, that puts a, you know, that all sense, and we'll have a new rep, I can keep that. And, and that's, that's, you know, that's a good thing. The equipment that we are looking to replace is, is in the base bid. But some of the other equipment is less than 10 years old. So we really do not want to replace that. We did have them go ahead and look into what the replacement cost would be, but it wouldn't be prudent at this time to work on second.
That's all I have for superintendent's update.
All right, that moves us down to consent items. Is there a motion to approve consent items?
So moved.
They're second, second. Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, new business memorandum of understanding, binding between Fairmont State University and Harrison County Board of Education.
I make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion, other than you want to explain this is just continuation, correct?
No, I, actually, it's new.
This is second.
Okay. Well, then explain.
We're just trying to figure out a way to help support students that are interested in the operations side of aviation piloting. And there are two courses that would be available to students at the high school level, and this would give them the opportunity to do that at, I think that we're looking at a reduced price. But the biggest thing for us that it does is it helps. But the biggest thing for us that it does is it helps us get our students into a very competitive program. And it, and, and if they're able to take these classes, successful with these classes, then the biggest thing that they get are like the two bonus points in the interview process of 20 points, a 20-point interview process. That, that might be the difference between them getting a seat and somebody else getting a seat. And so, um, Fairmont State's, uh, aviation program, particularly that, uh, Part 141 piloting program, um, is probably the most economic one available to students anywhere near us. Um, Marshall was trying to get their program up and running. Uh, that is still not, uh, very viable at this point, it looks like. I mean, they say that they're moving, but it's still, it's still being a work through for how they're getting done. And Fairmont is established, so I think that it's a good, a good move for us to try to get our students, um, uh, a foot in the door, so to speak. And the, the program that they're offering in the, uh, Aviation Management is also a really good program. I, I know a past graduate of that program that actually served as a, um, like a person in charge at Pittsburgh International. So there, it, it's a good program, this is good for us and it's good for the students.
Right.
I think the courses are starting, they want to just start in the spring and when it's a.
Ground school starts in the, in, is an after-school program like it, or after-hours. And then there's an aviation maintenance program, but like, you can do this ground school in a lot of different ways. And if you don't do it through a Part 141 school, uh, then it doesn't count towards your Part 141. That ultimately leads to your, um, Certified Flight Instructor status, all those kinds of things. So you can do ground school with a private pilot, um, pay for all that, do all that stuff, get your pilot's license of Part 61. And then you still have to get a Part 141, um, ground school.
This is good.
This is.
Good for our students?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah.
Any, any further, uh, discussion?
Sorry about all of that.
That's all.
Thank you for being here.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Out-of-state travel study request, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the out-of-state study travel request.
They're second. It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, Prevention Resource Officer position in Harrison County Schools. Is there a motion on that?
So moved to the set.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
I will say that the news coverage was very good. And I think that there was a lot of good, uh, that came out of that, what I've heard so far. It's, it's made it regionally. Um, and I've heard from people in Mon County and Marion County and Lewis County. And, uh, uh, they're very impressed with what we've done. So I think that it's a great, great opportunity for us to, to step into the light here, to showcase something good.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Communities and Schools Memorandum of Agreement.
If you'll look in your packets, there's a brief overview you'd like to read. We're still learning about it. We were offered the, the funding for the three, uh, positions in the schools from the state. I attended the meeting in Charleston and the few are familiar with Community and Schools. It's an initiative from Kathy Justice and they have it in about, I think, 30 counties right now. And it was an opportunity and they provided us an amount and we decided, yes, we can do that. It really is the wraparound piece that's missing and it would be great. And I know some counties, smaller counties having in all their buildings, this position, I mean, counties that have three or four schools. And the county, it's Wyoming County, she has it in all of her schools. She said it is that missing piece. When you have a child that maybe has attendance issues, um, all the things that we work on are tiers of support per child. There's always that piece that connects that child to the home. That's what this piece is. It's a person that works directly with the families, they may be going in to homes, they, it could be a social worker type position. And they've been fully funded, I think Julie said, now they told me three years, now they're saying five years. So she's now kind of, um, looking at it and getting involved. So there's meetings coming up, so we've decided to jump in. And this is also what you see on the news, sometimes they offer therapy dogs. You see, uh, the first lady with the therapy dog that comes with Community and Schools, so.
Were there, were there criteria to choose the three schools that we chose? Or how did we choose the three schools that, that, um?
That were chosen?
That were chosen.
Those were kind of, I, I talked initially when I came back with the information, I kind of gave the packet to our mental health coordinator. And she sat down and she had a, a chart of schools and what she felt they were missing. And so she really brought down Nutterport, that was before the pro officer thing. She brought down Nutterport Intermediate, Nutterport Primary. And then we felt when we were putting in the student support for elementary there with Hannah, that this would have been a great addition. And then us, the thing with the pro officer happened really after that. The pro officer thing we've been working on, but, so that's where it came from, was that. And we can expand to other schools. There will be one at Norwood, uh, this position as well, because she is lacking additional support over there, for sure. So they, it, it really will fill in all holes, I do believe, for our kids and what they need. It's not everything, there's not a hundred percent answer to, uh, everything, but it's a big piece of it. Speaking to superintendents that's rolled this out.
Yes, I can't remember that again, motion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Uh, second, uh, second. Moved to seconded, any discussion, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, no wall business, no policy updates, personnel matters, they are before you. Oh, and if I can be back up, uh, we do need to have a special meeting, correct?
Yes.
Very quick.
Please.
Special meeting on, we have two, inner, three, or is it two?
There's two positions.
Positions that need filled and we want to get them filled as quickly as possible. Even if you have to call in, because I'll be here, uh, can you do new on this Friday to get those positions filled? Yeah, I mean, we did.
We want to.
We do, if we do it that way, we can get the notice and do it at noon on Friday.
Friday.
It'll be quick, quick meeting.
Friday noon.
Doesn't allow us a two-day publicness.
Okay, all right, with that, uh, we'll back up to the personnel matters in front of us, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve personnel matters and, um, I guess the job postings that are with it.
The job descriptions.
Job descriptions.
Positions for the elementary.
Okay, job descriptions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, uh, brings us down to, uh, Board Member Comics, Mr. T. I don't have it.
Merry Christmas.
Mr. Hope?
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Fine.
Christmas, Happy New Year.
Same thing, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Move that seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for coming.